Okay, welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for March 12th, 2025. A little after six o'clock, we're at City Council Chambers, 345 High Street, of course, Hamilton, Ohio. We do have four public carriers this evening. They involve body art and tattoo zoning, another one involving BCR TA expansion, third one's extending the current neighborhood plan, and fourth one is the annual plan update that involves annual action plan update involving CDBG and home funds. Let's do a roll call, please.
Mueller.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear. Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Nav.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Set the motion to excuse Councilmember Fear for reasons known to City Council.
So moved second.
Motion to Vice Mayor Pullman, segmentary council member Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Carry none, motion is carried. We're starting offering a prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand if you are able. Almighty God, with the spring comes more travel, more pedestrians, more park use. Please protect those traveling to and from our city and those traversing within our city. Watch over our public safety personnel, military personnel, and also pray over the families of two retired law enforcement professionals who passed away recently. Hamilton Police Officer Kevin Flannery, Butler County Deputy, Montigny Mayor. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do have some special presentations this evening. First one is a celebration of a gentleman named Gene Beller, as well as really a celebration of our Hamilton Public Utilities Commission. So we've got a proclamation for Gene, and if anybody out there who has served on Utility Commission, and Edwin, if you would come on up here with Gene, we're going to have a presentation up here.
Yep. Okay, a lot of folks don't know about the Public Utility Commission, but what they do is every change in our utilities, when we consider rates, how to spend money on utilities, capital projects, it's always vetted through the Public Utilities Commission. And I've had the honor of sitting in on some of those meetings, and really, they are very wise people. I called them wise men for a long time, then it got a little bit younger, but not much younger, but great group of people. And one of them served 27 years on the Public Utility Commission, and that would be Gene Beller. Now, Gene, just raise your hand. These people don't know, these are all secret people up here. That's Gene Beller. Now, when I first got on council, a long time ago, Gene Beller contacts my law office, sets an appointment, and he wanted to ask me if I would keep him on Public Utility Commission. So he wanted to be on that commission so much to continue his volunteering, because these folks are volunteers. And it didn't take much long to convince me that we need to have Gene Beller on that Public Utility Commission, and then he served, God, probably 20 years after that. But he was at my law office, talked to me, we had a good sit-down conversation, and I learned from him about the Public Utility Commission. So if you could, why don't you introduce people here and...
Sure, yeah, so our existing commission members. So we have Rob Everhart, Chris Canal, Gene Beller, Bob Cassidy, Delbert Price, Dan Moats, and this is our recording secretary, so this is Debbie Cochran, and then Dave Stichinger.
Tell us sort of about a little bit about the Public Utility Commission.
Sure, yeah. So I wrote out a little something. So I wrote the, "Hamilton has a long and proud history regarding utilities. In fact, our modern utility started in 1884, when the water utility was founded. Following that, gas was founded in 1890, electric in 1893, wastewater in 1959, and the newest utility, Hamilton connects commercial broadband in 2022." I want to read an incredible snippet. It says, "Tonight, we turn a lever and press a button, and behold, the heavens are ablaze with light." Proclaimed Nelson Williams, a lawyer, civic leader, and featured speaker of the Great Electric Light Celebration of 1895. The occasion was to mark the completion of the first municipal power plant on North Third Street. The modern marvel of a facility featured a pair of arc lighting machines providing 120 kilowatts of electric power and three cordless engines manufactured by Hamilton's own Hooven, Owens, and Rentschler Company. The city Hamilton's current combined project generating capacity is over 1,000 times that original plant. The Hamilton Public Utilities Commission is comprised of seven commissioners, each nominated by the mayor and member of city council. The commissioners required to be resident electors of the city Hamilton, serving a volunteer capacity on the commission. They each serve a term coinciding with the mayor or member of city council that nominated them. The Public Utilities Commission, also we just call it the PUC, is charged with advising the city council and administration on matters related to the city's municipal utility operations. The PUC provides advice, opinions, and recommendations to city council and the administration on a number of topics, including contracts, agreements, trust indentures, and other legal obligations pertaining to the utility system, utility rates and charges for customers, delinquent utility account procedures and practices, employment of directors in the various utility systems, adoption implementation of long-range planning for the operations of the utility systems. Hamilton is fortunate to have these members of the PUC. Each member has a different background and perspective, and that diversity of thought leads to a powerful collaborative process.
You know, you sit down at one of their meetings and you realize how important utilities are to our economic development. So these individuals who vet projects, who hear our utility professionals talk about, if we increase capacity, what could that do for us from a job standpoint, from a electric usage standpoint? I mean, it is very educational, and it's very helpful when we here at the PUC hear something before it gets to council and the fact that they approve it. So thank you. She's the one I can charge in the meeting, seems like, although Edwin really is, but Debbie pulls, Debbie's the glue. And thank you, Debbie. I thank all of you for serving. And I'm going to read this proclamation for you, Gene, right now. Voselamayor Proclamation. Whereas Hamilton City Council, city administration, would like to give recognition and show appreciation to Gene Beller for his 27 years of service to the city of Hamilton Public Utilities Commission. That's as long as some people's entire careers, you know? Whereas Gene Beller grew up in Fort Smith, Arkansas, earned a bachelor's degree in business from Arkansas Tech University, and participated in Army ROTC while in college. Whereas after graduation, Gene served in an Army Artillery Division for two and a half years of active duty before being discharged with the rank of First Lieutenant. Whereas he then spent five years as an insurance claims adjuster for Crawford and Company, traveling around the country, until he got acquainted with Ohio Casualty's Insurance Office in Albuquerque, New Mexico. You have lived an adventurous life. From New Mexico, whereas Gene was encouraged to join Ohio Casualty, which brought him to Hamilton, where he met and married the love of his life, Wilma. And whereas Gina's had a successful 30-year career at Ohio Casualty, taking on multiple assignments as an underwriter, marketing representative, regional manager, and company training director before he retired. And whereas in his retirement, Gina served his community with an impressive 27 years of service as a commission member of the Hamilton Public Utilities Commission. And whereas Gene believes Hamilton turned out to be one of the best places he has ever lived, despite considering moving down south, he decided to stay in his adopted hometown of Hamilton. And we are so glad that you did that, because Gene, also behind the scenes, he's like a philanthropist. He and his wife are involved in many things that went on in this community. And so it's an honor to say that I, Pat Mueller, Meredith, Meredith Hamilton, and Hamilton City Council members, hereby recognize and show appreciation to Gene Beller for his service to his country, the United States Armed Forces, his successful career at Ohio Casualty Insurance, his service to the Public Utilities Commission, and for choosing his retirement in Hamilton, Ohio. So Gene, thank you, and how about a round of applause for Gene Beller? You want to say a few words, don't you? Now, I'll tell you what, Gene, at these meetings, this man's got quiet strength. He's an active listener, and you can tell that. You can see the gears going on. Now, he's not talking, but the gears are going. But then he speaks and asks very intelligent questions, and everybody around us has seen that. So Gene, please say a few words.
Very few. I could only say we are very lucky to live in a city that can provide us with the service that we have for our gas, electric, water, wastewater, at good service and affordable rates. And so it's been an honor for me to have some small part of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Gene.
Dan Moats worked for the city of Hamilton.
Next, we have another fine man and gentleman, I'll call you gentlemen, Danny. Most of us in this room know Dan Crank. He served on city council. He served as our Butler County recorder for quite a few years, and he's got a great team he's built around him. But he leads, and he wants to give a presentation about something which is starting to get attention, and those particular cards we've received in the mail, and they're all over town. So Danny, Denise, and Denise is truly a big part of your team.
Makes it work. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
And members of council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you very briefly this evening. Last week, I was in San Antonio at a national conference, and two sessions and a half session was based on deed fraud. Even though we don't have deed fraud here in Butler County, it is very active in certain parts of this county. There presently is about 50 to 60 bills circulated in the United States to address deed fraud. One of the problems with that is my job is to make sure that I can follow title from day one. So all the recorders, not only in Ohio but around this country, have to make sure that there's no legislation passed that might stop that progress, so we're going to keep a strict eye on that. But I'm not really here to talk to you about deed fraud, sort of. I'm here to talk to you about a document that I sent out, 93,000 of them, past week. It's called Property Alert. And I sent this card out because it seemed like every time I was in public or spoke before a certain group, people would ask me, can my property be stolen? I said, well, no, but. I know you see this on TV, it's called LifeLock or something like that, and they tell you to sign up for that and pay them. Well, for a couple of years, I have had a system such as that, because LifeLock has to get their information from my office anyhow. But we decided to make a new and improved Property Alert system, and we just got that implemented a few weeks ago, and I said, we need to let the public know, because, like I say, I get stopped all the time about it. Now, the architect of this new program is my chief deputy, Denise Gall, and she's going to spend a few minutes just telling you how the system works.
Thank you. I did bring some information, little handouts and stuff. I'll leave these up here, so you can maybe put them in the utility office or something for constituents to pick up. A little bit more information, a little bit handier, in case they lose the postcard. Basically, the way this system is working is you have to register for an account off of our website, and it's first name, last name, email, and a password. Once you register for the site, then you can go in and you can set your property alerts. So there's a couple of different ways to do that within there. You can do it for your name, your spouse's name, if you have elderly family, you can also set it, you know, for an elderly grandmother, mother, something like that. It doesn't have to be specific to your property, you can set alerts for other people. You can also, the enhancement on it is, we have expanded that, so if you have a specific piece of property, if you own one, two, three, four, or five in the city of Hamilton, you can actually locate your deed, and when you find your deed within the site, you can check the boxes for the name as well as the property. So you would want to turn around and do both of those if you can figure it out. If you can't, you can come to our office, our staff will help you out, and you can also call, we've been walking a lot of people through it on the phone and everything. But one thing to take into consideration is, like, example, like Tim, Nav, you would probably want to do Timothy, Tim, if your name is Dan, you go by Danny, Daniel, Robert, Bob, different variations like that, because, like Danny said, we don't see fraud in the office, but you could get something like, maybe you had a new roof put on your house, and the contractor was upset with you or something like that. They could come into our office and file a mechanic's lien against you. And as long as that document meets the statutory requirements of Ohio law, we cannot refuse to record that document in the recorder's office. So we have to take that document and record it, which could create a problem down the road. Now, our system doesn't turn around, it doesn't stop a document from getting recorded. What it does is, it gives you a notification within 24 to 48 hours after we've recorded and indexed that document. That gives you time to find out what it is. You're going to receive an email from our office, it will have the book page, date, time that it was recorded, as well as a phone number to call us. If you don't know what it is, you call us. We're not your legal authority for the constituents if something was filed, but at that point, you could make a police report, and also contact an attorney if you think that it's something that's not quite right. One thing also to keep in mind is, and I wish this was me, but if you have a mortgage on your property and you pay your mortgage off, the bank has to file the release with our office, so you may get notification that a document was filed, and maybe it was your release of mortgage, which is a good thing. But there's, any time that we index a document with that property alert and that property, that lot number, you're going to get a notification. So do you have any questions?
Great program. Thank you for educating us and protecting us.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Council Mayor. Appreciate you. Thank you much.
Next, we have Lokomotive update by Dustin Ward, Devin Ward. Seems like they were recent graduates of Hamilton High School, but I think it's been a couple of years.
2011.
2000. Introduce yourselves, please.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Glad to be back here in front of city council. I'm Dustin Ward, CEO of Lokomotive, and with me is Devin, my brother, and our COO of Lokomotive. And so before I do dive in, I just want to take this second to say thank you, guys. Thank you, the city of Hamilton, the leadership for really supporting us, and just the continued excitement around Lokomotive and when we'll be on the streets. So I just want to say thank you. I could say thank you a long time, so I gotta keep it short. Thank you. All right, so for the agenda today, we will be just discussing who we are, who Lokomotive is. We'll talk about our operations and some of our offerings that we provide, and then a timeline for go-live, and when you can see us on the streets, and then who should advertise. And that's where we'll spend a lot of the bulk of the time. This is the fun part of the conversation, so really getting creative around different campaigns and really showcasing our brands around the city. All right, so who is Lokomotive? Lokomotive, we are your first and last mile solution. And Devin will touch on what that means exactly, because I'm sure that's a very broad, broad sentence there, but we are going to be offering free rides through the downtown Hamilton corridor, and doing this through our electric shuttles, and these hold five passengers, six seats with the driver. But this is all powered with local advertising, so whether it be on the exterior of the vehicle, which you'll see some photos in a second, or on the inside of the vehicle, just using all the real estate that we can, but we also have an interactive iPad where riders will be able to engage with it and see what businesses are around town and what they can, what they can do around town while they're here. So with that, I will pass to Devin, and he will talk about operations.
Which one is? Right. So as Dustin had mentioned, Devin Ward, brother and partner of Lokomotive, I just wanted to first echo what Dustin had said. We really do appreciate the support that you guys have shown us already, everything that we have gone through the past couple of years. It feels like a while since we've been here talking with you guys, so we appreciate your thanks, your patience, and I just wanted to thank you guys again. Diving back into it, so I wanted to elaborate a little bit first on what first mile to last mile transportation is. What is it? What does that mean? In simple terms, it's getting from point A to point B, with point B being your final destination. So the way we see that working is, we have all these people coming into town for volleyball tournaments, events at Spooky Nook, and they need to know where to go. They want to say, hey, I want to go to lunch, how do I get there? So we're that solution. We're that gap between Spooky Nook and the rest of the city. So just to kind of outline a brief overview of our operation side of it, we're going to be operating on Friday, Saturday, and Sundays, and also, we're going to include the Thursday evening River's Edge concerts. We're also going to be very proactive on special events in the city, festivals. We got the opportunity to do a little bit with Operation Pumpkin, as well as the Hamilton Flea last year, and we really enjoyed that. So our goal is to engage as much as we can, be on top of those, help promote our local businesses, that's really what we strive on, trying to help bring everybody and grow the city, just as you guys have done such a great job in doing, we want to help promote that too. So our areas of interest are Spooky Nook, which is in the green, German Village, which is in the yellow, orange, that kind of central business district, which we say is High Street, and then Main Street. So we had got some feedback on trying to increase our route or make the route wider to include some of those other businesses with Sarah's House and Basil, and we already have had internal discussions about that, and we are planning on expanding to those Another common thing that we get is, how does this work? How do I get onto this ride? It's cool, but I really don't know. I'm here visiting, what do I do? So initially, we're going to be just flag-down service, so we're going to be within those areas. If you see it open, you can hop on at any point, and we will take you where you need to go. Future plans, we are working on some pretty cool interactive apps to where you can request rides, and we can time it, and you can see where those shuttles are in real time. So that is something that will happen in the future. Really wanted to get past kind of the operational side and use this time, and I promise to try to keep it as short as possible, if I go too long, feel free to stop me, but to really focus more on the advertising side of the business. What we've seen from talking with people so far is, they understand the free rides, they ask, hey, how do you make money? How does this work? And it really is through the advertising. And we can get really creative with that, and some feedback we've gotten is that, you know, I'm a small business in town, I think it's really cool, it's a very creative type of advertising campaign, but I just don't think it's for me. So we've created different models to be able to encompass basically every, every type of business here in town, whether that be a realtor, whether that be a small business, or even those kind of more popular restaurants like Tano. We've been very fortunate to be able to partner with Tano, we call this our flagship gem here, and so this first picture of the vehicle wraps, we offer three different models. One is an exterior vehicle wrap where they can really partner with us and wrap the whole thing. That is a little bit more exclusive, but we're also coming up with different models for those people who really just need something out there. And so the way we see it, we offer both partial wraps and then also being able to split it even more than that. So the partial wraps are really side by side. The way I see that is, say, Fretboard wants to partner with the hub. They say, hey, we really can't afford it right now, but we want to, we want to do something. Fretboard and Hub partner up, Fretboard takes the passenger side, and then the hub takes the driver's side. So we really think we've created an all-encompassing model, even to get smaller than that. Say Sarah's House, the Studio, Hamilton, Henry's Candy Company, they all want to do it, but they just can't come up with it. They can actually each take a door and split it between the three of them. So that's really how we're trying to promote from big to small. The fun part about this is actually, just out on the outside, we see the mobile advertising, right? So it's a mobile billboard, it's eye-catching, it helps to drive people to your business. The interesting thing that we've noticed around town is that when we're driving this around, they don't associate the gem to Lokomotive, they actually associate the gem to the restaurant. And they think, oh, Tano's cart, this is cool, if I want to go there, I'll just hop on and go to Tano. So that was kind of something that we didn't really expect out of this. Once they get into the vehicle, this is kind of where the fun begins. And so we have in-ride advertising, we have an iPad that is placed inside of the vehicles that then allows us to further break down advertising campaigns and marketing campaigns for our small businesses, and I think this is where it'll really benefit those small places like Sarah's House, and Petals and Wicks and things like that, and we think it's very cost-effective. Like I said, this is our current flagship vehicle here, so this is Tano. What I really wanted to focus on here was that mobile targeted exposure, so it's going to be going around town, it's eye-catching, I drove it here this evening, you just see the excitement around town, it's really cool. People kind of turn heads and say, hey, what is this thing? What is it? It's really cool. So to go back to the in-ride ads, so this is our app on the inside, this is going to be the interactive side. So people, when they ride, they say, hey, I don't know really what I want to do, can you show me some things? They can interact with this. We have some QR codes, it's going to be super user-friendly, interactive, and fun.
Yeah. And then you can see the GPS icons on the directory page, and that actually indicates who's on the route, but it also just creates more exposure to what else is out there, even if they're not on the route.
Again, another picture here, so we do have that QR code there. The riders will actually be able to continue looking at our app even after they get off of the ride, so if they're at Spooky Nook when they get back and they still need to find out what to do, they'll still be able to scroll through, which I think is another service to our businesses, you know, rather catching, capturing them. It's actually pretty interesting and funny that, I have a friend that was at a volleyball tournament recently, and he basically told me a story that he had a tournament with his daughter at eight o'clock in the morning, and then they had another tournament or another game at 4:00 PM, and they decided that they were just going to stay at Spooky Nook all day, because they didn't want to leave. They had a great parking spot, they didn't want to lose that, and they didn't want to fight the traffic to have to come back. And that's the perfect example of who we're trying to capture. Those people that, you know, they have some time to kill, they need something to do. And talking with some of our businesses here, they're having that... And talking with some of our businesses here, they're having that, they're having that trouble of getting people from Spooky Nook to actually come down. So we, we want to, we want to bridge that gap, and I think we can do a really good job of that. Again, this is just the icons that Dustin had, had alluded to. Other things that we, we do, so we have three different models in terms of advertising within the app, and we can get interactive with videos, and we can get static things. So we can put up menus, we can put up specials, and we'll get into kind of more of the creative stuff here shortly. And I promise I will try to keep it short. I get pretty excited about it. So to answer a question, target go live. So we are targeted for Q2 of this year to be operational and on the streets. This is the fun part. So who should advertise? What we see a lot of the time is you only see the outside. You see the exterior wrap, you look at our website, and it's, it's, yeah, this is cool, it's an exterior wrap, but they don't really understand what else they can do with it. And, and this is the fun side where we get to create, get creative, see what the businesses need, and see how we can be of service to them. People that we're looking for, law firms. How many times do you go down the highway and you see a law firm on a billboard and it says, injury, personal injury, you're in a car crash, call this number? I'll go back to this slide, but on this back one, you see the back window kind of in that middle picture there. I see a personal injury lawyer putting a thing that says, involved in a car crash, call us. And every car behind them is going to see that advertisement. Just a little spiel there. Other people that we're looking for that may not have really understood or really thought about this are Realtors. We can do some pretty creative things with Realtors, not just the outside wrap, but also if they want to showcase a premier listing, they're able to upload that to our app. If they need a little handout to pass out to riders, they can do that. It may not be that actual person, it may be somebody who says, hey, I'm, I'm actually looking into, moving into Hamilton, and, and this could be a great way to capture them. Insurance companies, hotels. I think hotels are a very interesting aspect of this and what I find very exciting. We can provide exclusivity to hotels to be able to provide transportation from hotel to Spooky Nook and back. And the cool thing and the cool part about the hotels is not only can they brand on the outside, but they can market the service to people and they're going to love that. How many times do we go out of town and we say, I'm going to dinner, what am I doing? I'm getting on my phone, I'm getting an Uber, I'm getting a Lyft, right? So that takes time, that takes money, and then also increases traffic congestion. So we're trying to solve all of those things. It's free, takes less time, we're going to come straight to you, and we don't worry about parking, and we, we decrease the traffic. Sports teams, universities, this is a cool, another little aspect. Think of Hamilton Joe, Hamilton Joe's, as well as Miami University. And then on the fun side, too, we, we're able to do special events, we're able to do push campaigns and brand awareness and brand advertising. So what these top two product distribution things are just kind of helps businesses get their product out. So the way we see it is, say, Henry's Candy Company has a new candy, they want to go to a Hamilton Flea or some special event, and they want to pass it out. We're able to do that for them. So this is the fun side of it. Like I said, I'll keep it short. I do want to, again, just thank you guys so much for your time. We do have a new website, you guys can continue to check us out at, it's locomotivehamilton.com. We actually partnered with a small business here in town to create the website there, Three Two One Creatives, to create that, but then also create our app. Feel free to go to that website, it has some contact information for us. We have our cell phone numbers, our emails, you guys can reach out with any questions that you have. I drove the vehicle here this evening, so if you guys are interested, I welcome you to come out. It's in the parking garage, take a look at it. You want a ride, I can give you a ride. Or if you just want to ask more questions, we'd be happy to do that. So again, thank you for your time and, and the continued support.
Any questions or comments from council?
You know, we, we like it when a plan comes together.
Us, too. Yeah. Yeah, but we will, we'll hang out the rest of the evening and then allow them the opportunity to anybody to check it out if you'd like.
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we now go to audience of citizens. Individuals who wish to make comments may speak during this part of the agenda or may reserve the right to speak when the item is up for a vote on the council floor. All individuals who intend to address city council are required to sign this blue public speaking book that was in the table, back of the chambers or outside the chamber's door. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes, and this book was out there until six o'clock. Is that correct, Daniel?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. First, we have Jim Loneman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Yeah, okay, okay, I was surprised you started in potholes, especially when, when they fixed over there, right on, going across river, right those, um, big state, right, there's two potholes right next to each other, uh, two, two, um, holes, um...
In the house?
Yeah, yeah, and you get two of them right there. If you can go between both of them, they'll hit, they'll hit the, hit the thing, but if you don't know where they're, you hit them every time. You know, that's pretty bad. I mean, they fix, they fix them, but they still don't fix them, you know?
Where's that at again, Jim?
So we're on a, on a cross, right across river, right on, right on, um, High Street, right on High Street.
Okay, all right.
And that's, that's, I mean, it's true, you say they fix them, and they look more good, I'm saying, but still, if you hit them, it's, um, so it's, it's still real bad.
All right, we, we're going to be working on that in the spring, and just kind of stay tuned, you're going to see definite improvement.
Well, thank you, you know, I'm, I'm, for safety reasons, we're...
Yes, we agree, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night, too.
Wendy Waters Canell?
Mayor Mueller, fellow council members, staff, and citizens. Sammy and I are here this evening representing YWCA Hamilton, and this is just a deep heartfelt acknowledgement and appreciation for the outstanding service that we received from the Hamilton Fire Department and the Hamilton Police Department on Saturday during our herstory and heritage event. Simply amazing, their level of professionalism, their level of engagement, their surveillance. We just felt safe and secure all day long, and we just wanted to say thank you for that. Thank you.
It was a successful, successful event, well done. Spooky Nook had all three floors celebration, celebrating these, these women and culture in our city, so it was very well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Sammy.
Thank you.
I have down Anne McBride. Do you wish to speak during the audience of citizens, or...
I was actually going to speak a little bit later with regards to the Kroger project, but the gentleman said, sign here, so I did.
Okay. So that would, that would be, or in the caucus part of the agenda, is that when you wish to speak, ma'am?
Okay.
All right, that takes care of the audience of citizens. We now go to the consent agenda. That includes all staff reports, all caucus reports. We're going to go into, maybe the whole, which gives council the opportunity to learn more about what's going to be up to us at some point in time after the caucus agenda for, for vote, and what's, what's kind of going on by our professionals in the city. So we'll learn from them, accept a motion, and the regular meeting be recessed, and committee of the whole take place. Come on.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Very none, that motion is carried at 6:41. We go in and committee the whole, and you're going to lead us in this, is that correct, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our first item, we present it by our Director of Planning, Director of Planning, Ms. Lauren Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So just a quick summary of the Kroger Marketplace and Fuel Center project, 182 Brookwood Avenue. So this was before the Planning Commission as a combined preliminary and final plan development for the project I just mentioned. It also included eight variance requests to the zoning ordinance. Planning Commission did take action and recommended approval of the combined preliminary and final PD request in all eight variances. I'm not going to go through all eight, but just to give you a flavor of sort of what those variances were specifically, there's a smaller loading area than the zoning ordinance spells out, and I'm sure more detail, we'll get into that. But the logistics, operational logistics for Kroger don't require as big of a loading area as the zoning ordinance calls for. The fuel center, you'll see on the, the layout here shortly, but the fuel center and the marketplace themselves are being planned as a single campus, and so some of the landscaping requirements that otherwise would separate those because they exist on different parcels are being adjusted so that there's access between both the fuel center and the store. There's a development sign that's being, that is part of this, that will face Main Street. So Kroger will be on that, and there'll be also other spaces for other tenants that exist sort of on that whole Brookwood development, and it's larger. So anyways, there's a number of things, but Planning Commission talked through all of those with the applicant and did approve all of their requests and is recommending that council approve them. The next couple of slides are just a couple of quick images. The site plan, I'm sure everyone here is familiar with the location on Brookwood Avenue. So in blue is the marketplace and parking, and in red is the fuel center location. And in total, it's about just over 11 and a half acres, and will include a double lane pharmacy drive-through on the south side of the property that's facing Brookwood Avenue. Here's a better picture. So this is the, sort of the layout with Brookwood Avenue being at the bottom of the screen there. So the market, the marketplace is on the east side of the property, and the fuel center then is just next to the gold star that's under construction. And here's a few elevation, showing the front elevation and then the Brookwood, the south elevation there, or the, um, south and east, and then the fuel center, not to scale. Obviously, the fuel center canopy is not larger than the entire building, but it is seven, it is seven fuel bays with 14 pumps. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'm sure you have more information and can answer the questions better than I have. I can't, so...
I was going to say, Planning Commission heard a very thorough presentation by city and Kroger, and Planning Commission accepted it, was impressed by the whole presentation and the quality, and went through all the variances, well presented and very thorough.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I just have one question, Lauren. The sign that's going to go, I think you said on Brookwood, or is it Main Street?
So there will be signage on, on both, but there is a, a larger sign for the entire Brookwood development that will be at the Main Street entrance, so it would have a, you know, a panel that is Kroger, and then also have additional signage that lists all the tenants for like the Brookwood complex, right, as a full development site. And then Kroger itself will have signage that faces Brookwood as well.
Is that like where CVS is? I couldn't figure out, looking at the drawings, I wasn't sure where that sign was. And you don't have to go into a lot of detail.
Yes, generally speaking, yes, the entrance that's on, that currently exists from Main Street, that takes you into that shopping center.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Questions, comments? I was impressed by the number of trees that are supposed to be there. I mean, it, 113, there's some number of trees, which is pretty incredible. Is that correct?
So in full disclosure, I was not at the Planning Commission meeting when this was presented, so I do not know, though I did read the minutes and I looked at the report, but off the top of my head, I can't tell you the number.
We asked about landscaping sometimes, people go, how many trees are going to be there? It's like, it could be a concrete jungle. Well, this actually has a lot of landscaping, and I'm almost positive it's a...
Yes, it does. And the variance for landscaping, I guess, specific to that point, lots of landscaping for the whole project. The variance is basically the back, the backside of the fuel center and the side that faces the store, so that, right, there's a driving lane and parking and things like that, and that you can, right, go back and forth between the two. So that parcel doesn't, typically as a standalone parcel, it would require landscaping on the, on the back of that parcel as well. So that's why there's a variance request for the landscaping.
All right.
Is there anything that you would like to add?
You're welcome. My name's Anne McBride. I'm with McBride Del Clarian, representing Kroger as we go through this process. First, I want to thank the city and your staff. They've been very professional, very thorough, and as a developer's representative, I appreciate that. So anyway, just a couple of fun facts about what we're proposing, and I know we'll be before you several more times. But the Kroger store itself is almost, is about 123,000 square feet. It's going to have 485 parking spaces, two EV charging stations, 16 online spaces where you can pick up your online shopping and have it delivered to your car, as well as Lauren mentioned, the double drive-through for the pharmacy. Both the drive, drive-through and the online shopping will be on the east side of the, of the store. And then, as was mentioned, there would be a seven pump island, which is 14 dispensing points for the fuel center. And I can go on and on if you want, but you're going to probably hear most of this later on. So I will just simply answer the question, which was 29.7% more trees and 57.3% more supplemental plant material, bushes and perennials and so forth. So if you had other questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but I won't go on and on tonight.
Questions, comments? Mayor? Please. Anne, please know how excited the community is about this opportunity of bringing a marketplace to the west side of Hamilton. It's been a long time coming. Residents, businesses, people in the community are just abuzz with this opportunity to be able to develop Brookwood into a destination center and things like that. So again, as, as you go along, I'm glad to hear that it's been very, very comfortable so far. We anticipate that it will continue to be comfortable. If, if you put a timeline to it, because TV Hamilton is here, the press is here and things like that, when would, when would you anticipate the center to be turnkey?
It just depends on how long it's going to take us to get through the zoning process, and then, you know, there'll be building permits and, and other types of permits and so forth. So really kind of hard to say at this, this stage of the game, but stay tuned, we can probably update you as we go along. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Just one other point, the development that you're looking at up here this evening is about a $35 million investment into Hamilton by the Kroger company, and they would anticipate probably about 325 full and part-time associates. So just a couple of other fun facts, okay? And we will see you next time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up for agenda, item number two, will be a presentation by our Director of Engineering, Mr. Alan Messer.
This is essentially a cleanup of our ordinance that relates to traffic commission. We looked to restart the commission here in recent and looked at how the ordinance was written as far as the makeup of the commission, and it called out a number of city positions that no longer exist, like traffic engineer and chief of the traffic division. So this is, this is a language, and essentially it's simplifying it and making it match today's organizational structure, which instead of those two positions would be a Director of Engineering and the manager of traffic operations. And in the original 1951 language, there was some reference to the commission having educational and supervisory responsibilities. The commission, for as long as I've been here, has been of an advisory nature, similar to PUC, so that's what we described in the proposed language. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So Alan, in this case, similar to all other commissions, this will have residents serving on it as well as city employees, which I think is really important to point out, just as we did with PUC. People can be on that commission to learn more about our cities and potholes and things like that, or ideas for dealing with traffic. But I just think it's important to point out that there will be residents on...
But I just think it's important to point out that there will be residents on that commission.
That's correct. There's two on there now, we're looking to expand that and have an actual application process similar to some of the other commissions, so it's structured in some manner. Other representatives on the commission are the police department, planning neighborhoods, engineering, those is appointed by the city manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three. All right, moving on to item number three will be a presentation by our Director of Project Implementation, Mr. Rich Engel.
We, the planning department, the engineering department, and the law department revisited the existing sidewalk cafe regulations, and we're proposing revisions to these regulations to improve the end product of our sidewalk cafes. Any brief summary of those includes requiring the sidewalk cafes in existence prior to passage of these modifications to also comply with the same regulations that was not clear in the first version. We're also requiring more details on the boundary design and materials of construction. The boundaries must be freestanding, continuous and free of sharp edges and projections. We will allow the use of planters with flowers or foliage, decorative fencing or approved materials. We require the boundary height to be some, be between 36 inches and 42 inches tall. Require the boundaries to withstand typical adverse wind loads and weather conditions. Require anchoring bases for boundaries not to project more than six inches beyond the boundary nor exceed one inch in height, and require fence sections to be bolted together so as a solid fence. We're also deleting the one-time permit application fee of $150, but there will be a fee of $150 will remain to be able to have a sidewalk cafe. We're also adding insurance requirements to the, to the legislation. And I have more details if you wish to view them, but this is essentially the summary of what we're asking council to consider. Do you have any questions?
The insurance, I guess it's a requirement.
I'm sorry.
An insurance.
Yes.
Is that a requirement?
Yes.
And if somebody wanted to know more about that, how would they find out more about the insurance requirement if they were planning on doing something like boundary? Who would they talk to?
Yeah, here's where we require, we're adding the City of Hamilton as additional insured.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
And our last item on our caucus agenda will be presented by our Law Director, Ms. Letitia Block.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller, members of the city council, Letitia Block, Director of Law. I am here to discuss with you an objection related to a new permit, liquor permit application filed by Dolgin Midwest LLC, doing business as the Dollar General Store on Fair Grove. So the Ohio Division of Liquor Control receives notice of applications, and they send those to the municipal corporation. The city clerk has received this request. What our process is, is to circulate the request internally. We circulate that to the police department, the fire department, the building department, and the health department. And when we have done that, the health department has notified us of multiple concerns at that particular property as a basis to object. As background, this particular permit allows carryout-only beer sales until 1:00 a.m. And so the recommendation of city administration is to object to this new liquor permit based upon the health department's recommendations. Are there any questions?
Is upon the health departments?
Yes. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Thank you.
And that concludes our presentations.
You accept the motion that the committee hall be closed?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to council member Nab, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, hearing none. Committee hall is closed at 6:57. I accept the motion, regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to council member Vaughn, second by council member Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion to reconvene the meeting.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Adopted at 6:57. Okay, and I'll accept the motion. Mr. Mayor? Vice Mayor Pullman?
Make a motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur on the recommendations.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Pullman, second by council member Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, hearing none, that motion is carried also at 6:57. We're now going to go into the public hearing part of our agenda. Now accept the motion that the regular meeting be recessed and the following public hearings take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to council member Lauer, second by council member Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried still at 6:58. Go on the public hearing part of our agenda. First, public hearing has to do with body art and tattoo zoning.
A public hearing regarding amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio pertaining to body art and tattoos, amending section 1250 zoning land use chart, section 1300 conditional uses, section 3900 glossary, City of Hamilton applicant.
The only audience wish to be heard, this public hearing involving the body art and tattoo zoning. The audience wish to be heard at this body art and tattoo zoning ordinance. Okay, and on council, well first off, nobody did sign the public speaking, public hearing book. Anyone on council wish to speak or make a motion at this time?
Mayor?
Council member Nab?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second. Council member Nab, second by council member Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. That particular hearing is closed at 6:59. Next public hearing involving BCRTA.
A public hearing approving 3045 Moser Court major plan development departure amendment and specific use request for the BCRTA expansion, Butler County Regional Transit Authority campus expansion, and vocational training fleet expansion and fleet fueling. John Bayer, professional engineer, per Bayer Becker applicant.
The only audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving a BCRT expansion. The only audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving a BCRTA expansion. For the record, no one's signed the public hearing speaking book. Anyone on council wish to comment or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Vaughn?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Council member Vaughn, second by council member Lauer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. That public hearing is closed at 7:00. Now go into the next public hearing, and it involves temporarily, temporarily extended neighborhood development plan.
A public hearing regarding an ordinance to temporarily extend the current neighborhood development plan for renewal plan's effective date from December 31, 2024 to April 1, 2026, City of Hamilton applicant.
The only audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving temporarily, temporarily extending the current neighborhood development plan, the urban renewal, urban renewal plan. The only audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving temporarily extending the current neighborhood development plan. And for the record, nobody signed the public hearing speaking book. Anyone on council wish to be heard or make a motion at this time? Mr. Mayor? Vice Mayor Pullman?
Make a motion that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion to vice mayor Pullman, second by council member Lauer, you wouldn't make a motion, you didn't want to speak, did you?
No.
And so we've got a first, we've got a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried. The time on that one is 7:01. We now go to the public hearing, the next one, which involves City of Hamilton's annual action plan update.
A public hearing regarding approving the City of Hamilton's annual action plan update for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant, CDPG, and home investment partnership program funds, and authorizing the substantial, so, sorry, the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD.
Thank you. The only audience wish to be heard at this public hearing that involves City of Hamilton's annual action plan update, which involves CDPG and home funds. The only audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving City of Hamilton's annual action plan update for fiscal year 2526, which involves also CDPG and home funds. Anyone accountable for the record, nobody signed the public hearing book for that particular public hearing topic. Anyone on council wish to be heard or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Vaughn?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Council member Vaughn, second by council member Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:02. I accept the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second. Council member Vaughn, second by council member Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion to reconvene the regular meeting.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Okay, so the regular meeting is reconvened at 7:03. We now go to actions pertaining to legislative items, and accept the motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Vaughn?
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion to council member Vaughn, second by council member Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:03. We now go into pending legislation. Agenda item number nine, second reading of an ordinance involving a right-of-way around Arbor Springs Drive.
An ordinance dedicating 7,800 square feet of property as right-of-way located at 1036 Arbor Springs Drive, part lot number 30075, First Ward, North Side, Hamilton, Ohio. Alyssa Miller Agaro Investments applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Council member Vaughn, second by council member Ryan. Any discussion on this one before we vote? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 6-0.
Go to agenda item number 10, second reading of an ordinance involving a right-of-way located New London Road.
An ordinance dedicating 1,527 square feet of street as right-of-way located on New London Road at West Fairway Drive, First Ward, South Side, Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mayor?
Council member Nab?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Council member Nab, second by council member Ryan. Any discussion or comment on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Go to agenda item number 11, new legislation, emergency ordinance involving a purchase and sale agreement, Gateway Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 7551 Gateway Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011. Finat Development Limited property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first of two readings.
Mayor? Vice Mayor Pullman?
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title?
Second.
Motion to vice mayor Pullman, second by council member Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6-0.
Thank you. We go to the second reading of the emergency ordinance, please.
Emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 7551 Gateway Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011. Finat Development Limited property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion to vice mayor Pullman, second by council member Ryan. Discussion on this, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 6-0.
We go to agenda item number 12, first reading of an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinances pertaining to body art and tattoos.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio pertaining to body art and tattoos, amending section 1250 landing, sorry, zoning land use chart, section 1300 conditional uses, section 3900 glossary, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 13, first reading of an ordinance involving a BCRTA expansion.
An ordinance approving 3045 Moser Court major planned development departure amendment and specific use request for the BCRTA expansion, Butler County Regional Transit Authority campus expansion, vocational training fleet expansion and fleet fueling. John Bayer, professional engineer, per Bayer Becker applicant, first reading.
Go to agenda item number 14, first reading of an ordinance to temporarily extend our current neighborhood development plan.
An ordinance to temporarily extend the current neighborhood development plan, urban renewal plan's effective date from December 31, 2024 to April 1, 2026, first reading.
We go to agenda item number 15, first reading of an ordinance involving Hamilton's annual action plan update, 2526.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton's annual action plan update for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development, block grant, and home investment partnership program funds, and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, first reading.
Now go to agenda item number 16, which is a resolution involving exchange agreement with the City of Fairfield.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an exchange agreement, property conveyances, easements, and related actions for certain real property with the City of Fairfield. Parcel number A0700009.000049. Parcel number A0700010.000028. And parcel number A0700010.000027.
Mayor? Council member Lauer?
I'd like to make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion to council member Lauer, second by council member Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Any discussion or comments or discussion about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 6-0.
We go to agenda item number 17, which is a resolution involving our 2025 concrete repair and resurfacing program.
A resolution ordering the resurfacing and repair of streets and concrete where necessary and appropriate on various streets and avenues in the City of Hamilton, Ohio. 2025 concrete repair and resurfacing program assessment rule.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Pullman?
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion to vice mayor Pullman, second by council member Ryan. Any comments, discussion, questions for city staff about this particular resolution? Roll call vote.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 6-0.
Have a good audience to the city manager? Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Audience of the city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Michael Ryan.
He remembered. Last week, Dan Bates from the Chamber of Commerce and First Financial Bank, Dwayne Greenwood, all three of us went up to Columbus to meet with our state legislators about our Amtrak pursuit. All the meetings went very, very well. The state of Ohio has some money allocated in the upcoming transportation bill that will help fund the upcoming 3C feasibility study, and will ultimately hopefully push us to get the corridor ID feasibility study funded for next year. The conversations went great. They are very eager about bringing passenger rail to Ohio, and they are very excited about bringing passenger rail to Hamilton. That was by far the biggest reason we were up there, was to fight for Hamilton, fight for our business community, because we know it's going to help our businesses and grow our businesses. So very appreciative to Representative Thomas Hall and our state rep, Diane Mullins, and Senator Lang for taking a lot of time talking with all of us. So it was a good trip. We got a long way to go, but we're, we're making progress, and that's what I want the residents and businesses to know, that we, we aren't going to stop until we are told to. So we are, we're pushing forward, and we are very aggressive, and we're very excited about this endeavor. So stay tuned. It's going to be hopefully some more announcements coming up, and we're going to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you for that positive report. Anyone else on council? I just want to say, I found Miami's campus, regional campus recently, and I tell you what, it's great to see students, computers, and books walking around our city. It makes AmHub even more exciting because we've got Butler Tech, Iam University, and I think when people start seeing more people in that area, town, it's going to cause an excitement, and it's going to be great for us who live here, those who visit here, railway comes through here. So it was just one of those things where I'm going, wow, yes, we do have a lot of education in this city, and with our report card for our schools, good, getting better, A, and it's also made excellence in their academics. So also want to say, St. Patrick's Day is coming up, so go to a restaurant, eat shepherd's pie, go to a pub, get whatever you want there. But it's a good time to, to celebrate Irish in this city, and all across our country, which helped build this country in a lot of ways. I'm sure back in the 1900s, when this city was a manufacturing giant, you had German,[1662.78]